Good evening. I would like to call the City of Mount Vernon City Council meeting for Wednesday, May fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five to order. The time is now seven oh one. Would you please stand with me for the pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, liberty and justice.
Item one C is the roll call of council members. I'll ask the city clerk to please call the roll.
Councilmember Eaton.
Excuse tonight.
Councilmember Roxsmith.
Here.
Councilmember Correia.
Here.
Councilmember Hudson.
Here.
Councilmember Ronar.
Excuse tonight.
Councilmember Tassero.
Here.
Councilmember Vanderstue.
And also excused. Thank you, Megan. All right. Approval of tonight's council meeting agenda. Counsel, are we okay with the agenda? Motion to approve it?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Navor, second by Richard. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. And we will go to item three, which is community comments. And if anyone's here to speak to counsel tonight, I would invite you to come on up to the podium and let us know your name and city of residence and limit your comments to about three minutes. Anyone here for community comments this evening? All right. Seeing none, we will move to the consent agenda. Tonight's consent agenda includes meeting minutes, payroll checks, wire transfers, claims and agreements. Counsel, motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
By Mary, a second by Navor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. All right. We will go to committee reports. For committee reports tonight, let's see. Counsel held its monthly Public Works and Library meeting tonight at six o'clock right here in council chambers. And Councilmember Mary Hudson chairs that committee. Mary, have a report for us.
That's, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
We had our meeting, like he said, just before this meeting. And the first item on our agenda was, after approving our minutes, was from our library director, Isaac Huffman. I'm just going to give you a couple of highlights. There is a new learn to read bench going or in at the library. And it's a collaboration with the Mount Vernon School District. And books will be supplied by the school district that will match the school district's curriculum. So that's a really great collaboration that we're very happy with. Storytime. We are in our storytime. Usually there's a break in a couple of weeks here and there to, I don't know what, rest up for more storytime. But we've run continuous storytimes every week since the beginning of the year, and it's going to keep going. It's a very great community event that people really love. And so we're going to just keep forging ahead. I'm going to move on now to the Public Works Department. Frank Reiner, our city engineer, gave us some updates. We're working right now on the draft two thousand and twenty-six to two thousand and thirty-one tip, which is stands for Transportation Improvement Program. Frank's been working on that for quite a while. And he's going to send the council and be posted on the city website for public comment by this Friday, a draft package of the items that will be on our tip. And it's going to contain these elements. An individual project one pager, which means if there's twenty projects on the tip, there's going to be twenty-one, twenty-one page descriptives telling you what the project is, how much it's going to cost, the timeline, everything. It's going to have a lot of information. And if you're at all geeky or nerdy like me, you will enjoy reading this because it's a lot of information. And please feel free to ask questions. That we, that's how we learn and change things and make things better. It's also going to contain a table, one table with the Transportation Improvement Program, program projects. The second table, Transportation Improvement Program projects that aren't programmed, because we have projects that we want to do in the city, but we just don't have the funding or the bandwidth to do them yet. So they're not going away. They're just put on another table so that we know they're in the future, something that we want to look at. There's another table that will talk about the fiscal feasibility. So you can see if we've already figured out the funding for it or how we're going to figure out the funding. Are we going to break it into two sections? There's also a project performance scoring table. So we have a lot of, you know, just trying to go through to see where it fits in our overall city transportation projects. And then he's also going to graciously include a memorandum to show us how he came up with the scoring that he came up for with each project. The next item or, yeah, item that he updated us on was the LaVenture widening, road widening project, which we've been talking about. We're working through the final design now. The public notice of the project has been sent to property owners and tenants that are adjacent to the project. We are coordinating with PSE for pole relocation needs. And, you know, PSE has a backlog of transmission pole designs regionally. But we are working very closely with them because that does tie directly into our project. We will need to purchase some right away on two corners of the project, which is where LaVenture and Austin Lane meet. We're reaching out and working with the property owners now. This project will go out for bids, an invitation for bid in early June, and hopefully the awarding of the project in early July. And then we'll do, planning to do the construction this fall and next spring. We'll have to split it up just because of winter weather. The next project we talked about was the Colson Lighting, Colson Trail Lighting. It's the third phase. We received our funding authorization letter for federal aid and on May first. So we were allocating and spending that money. The next step is to advertise for a design consultant in June. We are, I'm sorry, the staff is anticipating bringing a professional service agreement to the council in late June. The project will focus on Old Highway ninety-nine South, up the Blackburn Road intersection. And then optional street based on the transportation benefit district funds may include Hazel Street, which is out in front of our city wastewater treatment plant. And it just depends on the, on the condition of the street, if it needs to be, if it can be rehabbed or if it needs to be completely redone. There's, there's a lot of variables in there. And due to the delay in getting design started for the project, construction will likely be scheduled in both fall and spring and summer of next year. So again, because of winter weather. We talked about the pavement preservation plan, and we have received statements of qualifications from three consultant teams. We're currently in the process of scoring them to select our preferred consultant. And then we hope to have, they hope to have a professional service agreement brought to the council for authorization in early July. And then the last thing Frank talked about was the ADA transition plan. It had been paused during the spring just because of other projects and program commitments that we already had. Plan to start, kickstart that update effort in June. The key goal is, the key goal is to build momentum so we can keep, keep rolling while staff works on other projects and annual budget development this summer. Early efforts in this kickstart will include changes and updates to our website, public information on the city ADA program, and begin remapping pedestrian ramps and push button locations. Then we had Director Phillips give us an update on State Route five thirty-sixth Bridge, which is the one that connects east, west Mount Vernon to the city, the main city. I shouldn't, they're still part of the city, obviously. There's been a lot of, a lot of research and a lot of time has gone in with Chris on this. He, he did some background checking and talked to the Coast Guard District in Seattle. They provided some, they're going to, let me see. We have, the bridge has a component in it that, that has, it's, it's a bridge that opens. It has to open. And we have, there's a rule, I guess, that it has to be opened within a year. They have to give you a year to figure out if it'll open or to get it open. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of things to figure out about this bridge and what, and it belongs to the state. It's not a city bridge. So we're just, we're still learning. It's a big learning phase. And because we would really love to have something done with that bridge, and I'm sure you all would love to have something done with that bridge because it's just not beautiful. And anyway, so we're, we're still discussing it. It was an interesting presentation. We've got a lot of bumps in the road, I think is probably the best way to put it. So we're still, we're still working on it. But, but if you're interested, Wash Dot will be here to present on, in the June twenty, this June, next month's Public Works Committee. So you could come and listen to their, their presentation and, and get a lot more really detailed information about it. And the last thing we talked about was, we had some allocate, we allocated the last of our art fund last year. And he just gave us an update on what, what we funded and where we are in our progression. So we, we finished several, we're in the middle of several. And then one was, we, we basically are deciding what to do with the last one. So that, for, that was a very action-packed meeting, and we did finish at six fifty-seven.
And you summarized it well.
I did a lot of stuff.
Thank you. Yeah, but when Wash Dot comes, it sounds like they're going to talk about both Route five thirty-six, so Memorial Highway to the west, and also College Way, five thirty-eight, and kind of give an update about that. We hear a lot about College Way as well. So if you're interested in how bumpy the ride is on College Way, please be here and let your concerns be known. We had our Public Safety Committee meeting last week. We do that on the first Wednesday of every month at six o'clock. And Councilmember Navor Tassero is the chair of that meeting and has an update for us.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we called the meeting to order at six P M. We first had our fire chief, Harris, give us an update on a couple of different things. One was on the cost of station number one, or the proposed plans that we have for station number one. There are a lot of different challenges to that project. Certainly, the, the cost is one of those. And so we are, we discussed alternative plans, where else we could look to put that fire station. We also talked about a, putting together a strategic plan for the department. So looking at the growth of the city, looking at popular demographics, population change, all of those sorts of things, and trying to put together a, a plan for fire safety, fire, the fire department in the city of Mount Vernon. And so we, we now have to look at how, how to fund, correct, that, that strategic plan. But certainly that's something that we want to have in place as we, we look forward to fire, the fire department, fire safety here in the city of Mount Vernon. We, we talked about the possibility of partnering with other local cities and fire districts to create a regional fire authority as well, depending on what that strategic plan tells us about our future needs. Looking to see if that is one of the possible solutions to what, what it is that we need to do in the future. Police Chief Christman had, had the report for our police department. Mentioned the success that our police department is having, that crime is down in our North River Commercial area. That's very encouraging. Thank you, Chief Christman, for the attention that you've put on that area there. That's certainly something that we, we wanted to see those crime statistics come down in that area. We've also seen job vacancies here in our police department, January through March, yielded very few candidates. But we have had an increase in both entry level candidates and lateral officer candidates. So hoping to see that our, our staff increased here in our city police department. We, oh, he also mentioned that we've seen, we've developed a voluntary registry for vulnerable individuals. And so what, what we're going to try to promote here is the ability for residents here in the city of Mount Vernon who have, just as an example, let's say, an adult autistic child who is nonverbal. And when police go onto a call to an address, that would be an alert that would show up on their system as they go to a call to that address. So that those people who, there was a situation in Idaho where a, a young man was, was shot by police because he was a threat to somebody, but they didn't know how to interact with him. And so that's certainly something we want to avoid here in the city of Mount Vernon. And I'm so glad to see that our chief has taken the lead on this and wants to promote this to residents here to be able to register and say, there is somebody at our address who is nonverbal or noncommunicative. We, we, we need to alert police to that fact. On our agenda requests, the Center for Inclusive Entrepreneurship would like to come and offer a presentation to the council. There was also a request for the Lincoln Theater to come and do a presentation. Next year is going to be the centennial celebration of Lincoln Theater. And so we certainly want to find out how the city of Mount Vernon can be involved in promoting that great milestone there for the Lincoln Theater. Under miscellaneous, we continue to discuss our council and mayor's statement on immigration here in the city of Mount Vernon. We, what we decided is that we're going to continue to engage with the, the residents who want to, who have formed a committee to interact with the council and continue to work on this statement as, as we want to ensure that people understand that no services will be denied. They, we want them to call police and fire. There's, there's no, there's no need or risk for them to interact with the city regardless of their immigration status. And so we want to assure our residents here that this is something that we are, are working on as a city. And so we will continue to work on that with that committee going forward. We adjourned the meeting at seven twenty-nine.
That's more. All right. Item five B is council member comments. Any council member comments this evening? Yeah, Councilmember.
I just would like to give thanks to the community for the, the first four days in May. May first, second, third and fourth, and through the Kiwanis Club and my colleague, Richard Roxman. And I, we were part of this big celebration. And May fourth, it was an annual prayer breakfast. And I would like to thank my colleagues for attending and supporting us. And plus the second, third and fourth, it was a very successful weekend for the salmon barbecue and all the funds. We, it was a successful event. We have a lot of residents and, and visitors to come to support us. And all this money is coming, going back to the community for a scholarship for our students. And we hope to have those events done in the, before the graduation for our students. We, so far, we have about a twenty scholarship plan, and, but we have thirty-six applications. It's going to be a little tough, but we do what, as much as we can to serve the community and the students. Thank you for the support. The, and we hope to see you all next year for the salmon barbecue celebration. Thank you.
And Kiwanis has been busy lately.
Yes.
They do some great stuff in the community. Thank you and Councilmember Roxman for your participation. Other comments? Okay, I'll give a couple then. I've got a mayor's report. All right. Yeah, we're ready. For mayor's report, Steve pulls the slide. First of all, if you know our Parks Department, you know that they love to work and they love to party. But they are doing both this Saturday at the same time, apparently. Wanted to invite you all to a work party this Saturday, May seventeenth, at Bonnie Ray Park. Bonnie Ray Park is a relatively undeveloped park that the city is in the process of improving for the purpose of expanding our green space and providing new environmental learning opportunities for our city. So this park is located south of LaVenture Blackburn intersection, specifically that's two thousand and sixty-six oh one South LaVenture Road. So we'll be there from nine to noon this Saturday, and we need you to help us transform the garden beds into beautiful thriving spaces by removing invasive plants and planting some native species to support local ecosystems around the buildings there. Those buildings are being developed into classrooms and, and a learning center eventually. We'll, we'll have tools there for you. But we also invite you to bring your own favorite tools as well. No experience necessary. So please don't bother sending us your resume. You're in. We do need you to register at the address that's on the screen there so that we know you are coming. We'll be prepared for you and have, have adequate tools and all of that. So otherwise, just register and show up and join the fun this Saturday. And then meanwhile, on the west side, which yes, is a part of Mount Vernon, a vital part of Mount Vernon, in another park with recent improvements, I'm going to take a chance hosting my next mayor's coffee hour outside at Edgewater Park. And why not? It's May, and it's always dry in May in Western Washington. I don't see what could go wrong. So we'll be outside at the park there, having coffee in the sunshine. If it does rain, we'll, we'll head a couple of blocks west and visit our friends at Katz on Division. So there's an address there, seven twenty West Division Street. So maybe show up to Edgewater a few minutes early. If, if you see signs there and no people, it's because we went to Katz. And don't worry, there's an all ages area at Katz. That was your next question. At seven twenty West Division Street. And we're going to have coffee and conversation indoors if it is raining. So that is next Tuesday, May twentieth, noon to one. And that's your mayor's report for May fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Thanks, Steve. We're moving on to new business. Under new business item A, it is the appointment of two arts commission members. Awesome. I think Jennifer Burner, our Parks Director, is out. So our Finance Director, Doug Valeski, is going to introduce this item. Thanks, Doug.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. I'd like to invite Marin Terring and Samantha Irons to come up here. So Marin and Samantha will be joining the Arts Commission in the two thousand and twenty-five as new members. In accordance with the City of Mount Vernon Ordinance Title II, Chapter two point nine seven, the Mount Vernon Public Arts Commission Commissioners will be appointed for three-year terms. Staff recommends council approve the appointment of Marin Terring and Samantha Irons to the Mount Vernon Arts Commission.
Do we want to do the, the action probably prior to the swearing in, yeah?
Yeah.
Makes sense.
Can handle it from here.
Does anyone have questions about arts commission appointments or, or these arts commissioners?
I'm thankful that you are applying to be on the Arts Commission. I thank you very much. It's, it's a great program and a great commission. So, thank you.
Thank you for getting involved in the, in the city. What are you doing?
With that, I'd make a motion to approve the appointment of Marin and Samantha to the Mount Vernon Arts Commission.
Second.
A motion by Richard, a second by the rest. Or by you. You can decide, city clerk. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. And now we can swear you in as arts.
Mayor gets so excited about these things.
Do a two for her?
Yeah.
Okay. You can state your name and just say your name out loud as we, as you repeat after me. All right. I state me.
Marin Terring.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform and discharge.
Perform and discharge.
The duties of.
The duties of.
Mount Vernon Arts Commission Member.
Mount Vernon Arts Commission Member.
For the city of Mount Vernon.
For the city of Mount Vernon.
In and for the county of Skagit.
In and for the county of Skagit.
State of Washington.
State of Washington.
According to law.
According to law.
To the best of my ability and understanding.
To the best of my ability and understanding.
You got it. Yeah. All right. Another round of applause. All right. Item B is an amendment to a city agreement with Martin Marietta. And I believe City Attorney Kevin Rogerson is here.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the City Council, Ms. Burner was unavailable. However, I was legal counsel for this First Amendment to the lease agreement with Martin Marietta and was legal counsel of the original agreement. And I've consulted with Ms. Burner regarding the terms and conditions. So what you have before you is an amendment to the lease agreement with Martin Marietta in which they lease about sixty acres of city property to operate a rock quarry, which is located outside the city in two thousand, twenty thousand four hundred and eleven East Hickock Road, Mount Vernon, which is on the south side of Little Mountain Park. As you know, on March twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five, both parties agreed to amend the access road location, relocating it from inside the quarry to outside the quarry. This amendment would affect that change to the reclamation permit from the Department of Natural Resources. That would be, that's an attachment, is an exhibit to the amendment. In addition, this amendment really does two things. It extends the term to allow them to go deeper. That deeper level is called a benchmark, which is set forth. The recital is changed to allow five million volume cubic. I think it's cubic. I'm not a minor. Five million tons of fine base course and sand gravel because they're going deeper. And section three and four is the extension of the term from two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and thirty-four. By extending this to two thousand and thirty-four and modifying the benchmark depth, they will be able to access, of course, additional aggregate reserves to continue to serve the Mount Vernon community. The estimate modifying the benchmark will result in approximately another million dollars of additional royalty payments they pay to the city during the time period from October ten, two thousand and twenty-eight to October ninth, two thousand and thirty-four. Otherwise would not occur if the lease is allowed to expire in two thousand and twenty-eight under the current benchmark. So this First Amendment modifies those things as I explained. I do note that there are two officials from Martin Marietta. If you have any technical questions about benchmarks, operations, environmental review, I would defer to them as the subject matter experts. If you're a historian, because I did do the original lease, this land was actually given to the city in nineteen twenty-nine by a lumber company. We started mining it in nineteen forty-nine, and then we leased it in the seventies to a third party to get royalty payments. I believe the first party was Allied Aggregates, Pacific Quarry. And now it's Martin Marietta. And we're nearing the end.
Questions for Kevin or Martin Marietta's staff?
And it's the recommendation of staff that, that we.
The Parks Department does recommend this, yes.
Yeah. Well, we've been in several months of conversations with Martin Marietta Materials. And we've asked them to make sure that they leave as much flat ground as possible. So they've made some adjustments to their own quarry plans. We've looked to make sure that this agreement doesn't hinder city council operations and that it benefits the public, which it does. We, this, this agreement does leave the site off limits to the city as we lease it to Martin Marietta for the next, was it through two thousand and thirty-four?
Correct.
But the Parks Department doesn't have immediate plans or capacity to utilize the site. So it really is a benefit to the, both the company and the people who utilize the products and the city by gathering about a million. products and the city by gathering about a million dollars in extra royalties for our general fund. So this appears to be a win-win-win. We appreciate the company, you know, addressing any last concerns we had, and so I'm happy to make a motion to approve the agreement, the amendment to Agreement 3656. To get us started.
Second.
Motion by Richard, a second by Navore. Any discussion on the amendment with Martin Marietta? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion passes. Thank you, Kevin.
Welcome.
I'm still here.
You're still here. The attorney that just stays there.
Ooh.
I didn't see a public hearing and a resolution for body-worn camera record fees. It's Resolution 1071, and the Attorney Kevin Rogerson has this item too.
Thank you, Mayor, and distinguished members of the City Council. Before you, it was Resolution Number 1071. What this does in essence is it adopts a fee schedule for those people who are requesting body-worn camera records. As you know, several years ago, the state legislature created a mandate that law enforcement has to employ body war and cameras for accountability and transparency reasons. What that also did was create a completely new universe of public records in which the city now is responsible for handling and providing, unless it's exempt under your state public records or other privacy laws. Anecdotally, I would say public records act compliance is one of the largest unfunded mandates to any local jurisdiction, given the times and costs. This allows you to recoup some of those costs when it comes to body worn cameras, but you need to do it through council manic action, which is before you today. What they would do is they'd give an estimate of costs. Actual costs would be calculated. There would be a 10% deposit. We would strongly recommend that you adopt this so the city can start recouping some of these costs.
Questions for Kevin on this?
Yeah. In the same legislation that they required this of us, did they set any limits or caps on the fees that you can?
Yeah, actual costs, and you have to use, the exact statutory language escapes me, but I think it's the least expensive commercially available technology to redact or pixelate, which we have done through our studies of confirm that we comply with the statutes.
Good. Other questions?
I'd move to approve Resolution 1071.
Second.
Motion by Mary, a second by you. Discussion? All those in favor say, oh, excuse me?
Oh, public hearing.
Let's have a public hearing then.
Sorry. Got ahead of it. Sorry, Becky.
Such a rush tonight.
Yes, please.
With that, we will open up the public hearing for Resolution 1071 on body-worn camera record fees. Anyone wishing to address council or speak on this item tonight? All right. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and now we will get to a motion that was on the floor. And did you get the motion and second? Yes. And there was no more discussion? All right. I would hate to rush through this. We could linger for a while. Nope. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes. Thanks, Kevin. I would also, as before we move to item D, just say if anyone in the audience, well, if you were here, say for, to be sworn in as an Arts Commission member, or your friend was, our meetings are awesomes, but you're free to go as well. Don't feel like you have to stay. This is gonna be a long one. We love the work that we do, and we hope you're interested too, but if you're less interested, feel free to go. Item D tonight is a public hearing and approval of the city's 2025-26 CDBG Annual Action Plan. Special Projects Manager Steve Sexton is here for this item. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council. So this evening, we've concluded our 30-day comment period on our CDBG funding. We received no public comments on what the council had taken ideas on before as for funding purposes. So this evening is our second open-record public hearing for 2025-26 CDBG funding, and it gives, you know, constituents and interested parties another chance to comment for council. And that's all, about all that is on your cover sheet that is the same as it was this morning. Because this morning, as I hope you all got the email I sent out, we got new funding numbers, and we have about $45,000 more to distribute and allocate this year. So my question for council is, would you like to open a public hearing now and hear from the public, or would you like to start looking at these numbers and discuss that first?
Your call on the order you wanna do this. One way to look at it is, you wanna hear from the public and see if there's anything input they have, and then do the numbers, or you can set the numbers and hear from the public? We could have two public hearings if you want.
Let's hear from the public first. That's my vote.
Okay. Good with that? Okay. So we'll pause the presentation, open the public hearing for the CDBG Annual Action Plan. If anyone is here to speak to that, please come on up and state your name, city of residence. Anyone here for the action plan? Okay. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing.
All right. With that, we will start, again, this is the nuts and bolts of it. This is kind of the description I put together this afternoon, showing the difference between what was originally estimated for funding and the actual allocation that we got this morning notice of. I think it's very timely that we got that this morning, so we can take one swing at this and fulfill our annual action plan and get that to the county for approval. So based on our consultants conferring with her, this is kind of what the process was to distribute those, that extra $45,000. We're still constrained, as you can see, by the 15% maximum for services and 20% maximum for administration. If we did that, took this to the 20%, that would raise the administrative amount to $75,522. And again, the services would all go up by about $2,200 each. So that would utilize that 15% of that new total, and that would leave that amount left over of about 40, what is it, $48,000? So it would bring this total for, if you chose to make that decision to Home Trust of Skagit for their land acquisition from $46,510 up to $75,450 when their ask was for $100,000. So there's a few different ways that we could slice this, but that was the recommendation from our consultant, and it seemed to make the most sense. As we discussed previously, it's unfortunate that 20% limit for services just relegates, you know, not a lot of money to each of these, you know, very worthy applicants, so.
Still a little surprised our allocation was actually higher over last year.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I think it was about $17,000.
HUD funding.
Yep.
Thoughts, Council?
I am, I like the way, I actually think it's very equitable, the way we split it up, or it was split up again with extra funding, because quite frankly, if you took the difference like in the public service realm and decided to split it four ways, everybody's gonna get less. So I think that the way that piece was broken out is equitable. And I just wanna remember on the Home Trust land acquisition, had we set a timeframe? I know they don't have land right now to purchase in Mount Vernon, but had we set a timeframe? I'm trying to remember.
The guideline is three years.
Okay.
For that, yep. And they are actively looking, as you can imagine.
Okay.
Well, these are lots of nonprofits and groups who have come again to the city to, you know, ask for HUD funding. These are all great nonprofit groups that are doing excellent service provision in the City of Mount Vernon. There's more need than money, so unfortunately, we can't fund everyone. I know we've asked the Center for Inclusive Entrepreneurship to come and give a presentation on camera for the City Council because they offer great services to up new starting businesses about how they can succeed, particularly those who might have, you know, English as a second language. So that's one of the things we can do, and we'll continue to do everything we can for these groups, you know, to be successful. We just don't have enough money to fund everybody, but I do think we've landed on the best possible distribution with the funds we do have, for my two cents.
Other thoughts? Council's comfortable with this mix and entertain a motion?
I'll move the, that we approve as proposed here.
Second.
Motion by Navore, a second by Mary. Any more discussion on the action plan? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion passes. Thank you, Steve. Thanks for your work on this and Gary's work, and I appreciate it. Item E is the approval of a resolution for wastewater utility equipment purchasing, and Public Works Director Chris Phillips has this item. Chris?
Thank you, Mayor, and esteemed council. City staff recommends that the City Council authorize the mayor to declare FKC Company LTD as the sole source provider of the SEW Eurodrive gear reducer and adapter assembly. Additionally, city staff recommends authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with FKC Company LTD for the purchase of one SEW Eurodrive gear reducer and adapter assembly in the amount not to exceed $53,000 excluding shipping and taxing. And one of you may be asking, what does this piece of gear actually do? And I will share that with you now. The SEW Eurodrive reducer and adapter assembly is installed to the FKC screw press. The screw press requires a gear reducer in order to operate the screw press. Wastewater treatment operations and maintenance staff discovered that the SEW Eurodrive will allow the screw press to operate at a lower speed than the existing drive, resulting in drier biosolids, thus reducing hauling costs by about $40,000 a year. So that's the so what behind why we'd like to go with this sole source. In accordance with RCW 39.04.2801 Alpha, sole source bidding is allowable because the product is available only through one supplier. Attached is a letter from FKC Company LTD certifying they are a sole source distributor, and Mount Vernon is receiving the lowest possible pricing for the product. City staff recommends the City Council authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with FKC Company LTD in the amount not to exceed $53,000 excluding shipping and tax, pending your questions.
Questions for Chris? Everyone's added to our wastewater facility treatment, right?
Make a motion to approve Resolution 1072.
Second.
Motion by Richard, a second by Navore. More discussion?
Do we need to, it says that there's two different things on here, just wanna make sure. Do we need to declare a sole source first, or is that encompassed?
Just encompassed.
Okay, just wanna make sure.
Thanks for checking. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes. And if the public is interested in a wastewater treatment tour, that's a possibility, right?
Absolutely. And we have Gary right back there.
Gary's your tour guide.
He is our wastewater treatment plant manager, so.
It's actually amazing.
Yeah.
And award-winning.
And award-winning.
Protecting our Skagit River, so thank you, Gary, and all our employees.
Item F is an amendment to a city agreement with HDR Engineering, and Public Works Director Chris Phillips has this item too.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Staff recommends amending the professional services agreement with HDR Engineering for additional engineering services for the 2025 sewer comprehensive plan. The city entered into a professional services agreement with HDR Engineering on August 29th, 2023 in the amount of $567,805, which included the following efforts: reviewing and updating system inventory and GIS data, evaluation of current and future planning data, demanding for, or demand forecasting, and system analysis, evaluation of nutrient reduction capabilities and other regulatory requirements, develop and update the wastewater capital improvement plan, and then to develop a suitable financial program. The amendment will modify the following. There are a few tasks here in Task 400 that are related to development of a hydraulic module or model, desoping 120, Task 120 for collection, collection system surveying, document use of Task 1400 for management reserve funds for additional flow monitoring efforts, and add new Task 1500 to perform a sewer rate study. So this is really the bone of what we're asking for. The motion is to authorize the mayor to execute a contract amendment with HDR for additional engineering services for the 2025 comp plan, the new contract amount of $630,386, which is well within the confines of that enterprise fund. We're still good there, pending your questions.
Planning on our wastewater services as we grow 20 years into the future or more? How will accommodate that growth?
And this will complement Stacy's effort with the comp plan that you all are working on now.
Questions for Chris? Motions?
Move to authorize you to execute the contract amendment with HDR Engineering.
Second.
Motion by Mary and a second by Navore. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes. Thanks, Chris.
All right, thank you.
Item G is in agreement with General Teamsters Local Union Number 231, and Human Resources Director Erin Kader has this item. Hi, Erin.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor, Council members. I'm here regarding the Teamsters Local 231 collective bargaining agreement. The collective bargaining agreement expired on December 31st, 2024. We began negotiations with the Teamsters back in November and came to a tentative agreement in April. The union voted to approve the agreement on April 24th. Some of the highlights are, it's a three-year contract. We have cost of living adjustments in there for 2025. It's a 4% increase, so that will be retro back to the beginning of this year. 2026, it will be a 3% increase. 2027 will be a 3% increase. And then we did adjust the parks' maintenance workers' upper range to reflect where our comparables are. And then we increased longevity pay by $10 per month for each of the tiers. The total cost for 2025 is going to be $211,628, all of which was budgeted. And with that, staff recommends that council authorize the mayor to sign the January 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2027 collective bargaining agreement with Teamsters Local 231.
Questions for Erin? Motion to approve.
I move that we approve the January 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2027 collecting bar, collective bargaining agreement with Teamsters Local 231.
Second.
Motion by Mary, a second by you. Discussion? Those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, say no. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Erin. Item H is an MOU with National Recreation and Parks Association for an out-of-school youth mentoring grant, and I think our Finance Director Doug Valeski is going to fill in for Jennifer Burner, our Parks Director, who couldn't be here tonight. Doug, welcome back.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. The Recreation Division applied for and received a youth mentoring grant from the National Recreation and Parks Association. The grant is for $60,000 to be distributed over the next two and a half years, May 2025 through September 2027. The grant will cover the cost of the recreation leader position for the supervised playground program and $8,000 each year for the recreation coordinator salaries and supplies for the different programs. No additional city funds will be needed to administer the mentoring grant, and no matching funds are required for this grant. Staff looked at current programs that were offered and altered them to fit the grant requirements by incorporating mentorship into the supervised playground, environmental stewardship, big hitters and little kickers program. To activate the grant, the city needs to enter into a memorandum of understanding with NRPA. So with that, staff requests approval for the mayor to sign the memorandum of understanding with the National Recreation and Parks Association for the youth mentoring grant.
Thanks, Doug. Questions on this one?
I'm thanking the Parks Department for reaching out and finding a grant. That's wonderful.
How great are grants in the middle of a budget crisis?
They're so good. And with that, I'd like to make a motion or move that we sign the MOU with the NRPA for the youth mentoring grant. I was gonna throw out another acronym, but I'll go with.
Second.
Man, that was dead.
That couldn't have been closer. Motion by Mary, well-executed motion by Mary with the acronyms. A second by Richard. Any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed to the free money, say no. Motion passes. Thanks, Doug. All right, item I is a street closure request. Oh, you get this one too. For. Item I is a street closure request, oh, you get this one too, for the Mount Vernon High School graduation. Doug?
Yes, the Mount Vernon High School graduation parade will be held on Wednesday, June 11, 2025 at 6:00 PM. The parade will recognize a graduating class of Mount Vernon High School. It will bring community members together to fulfill the mission of the city to promote Mount Vernon as a wonderful place to come, visit, do business, and live. Staff recommends the temporary closure of South First Street and Cleveland Avenue to accommodate the graduation parade.
Questions? Motions?
I would like to move to the city to approve a Mount Vernon School District for closing the street on the 6/11 at 6:00 PM for the high school graduation parade.
Second.
Motion by Yudis and a second by Navore. Discussion?
Go Bulldogs.
Go Bulldogs, yes.
Bulldogs. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Doug. Item J is an MOU with Washington State Patrol for shared radio frequency, and Police Chief Dan Christman's here.
Good evening, Mayor, council. There is no money associated with this, so hooray for us, huh? Every year, we enter into this agreement with Washington State Patrol. We make our radio frequency available to them, and so they have to renew that each year. And so staff is simply requesting approval of this MOU with WSP for police and WSP to share our radio frequency.
Any questions?
I would move that we approve this MOU.
Second.
Motion by Navore and a second by Mary. Discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no? Motion passes. Thank you.
Excellent. Also, the next item is also no, no cost. The Criminal Justice Training Commission, our police academy, has opened up a satellite campus in Arlington, and one of our employees is helping to teach defensive tactics down there. He's the only one in the region that is qualified to do so, and the Criminal Justice Training Commission reimburses us for his time down there. And so we're simply asking that you approve this agreement with Washington State Criminal Justice Training Commission for police staff to provide instructor services at the Arlington Satellite Police Academy.
Any questions about this agreement?
That's pretty awesome.
Any motions?
I'd like to move that we approve this.
Second.
Agreement. Motion by Navore and a second by Yudis. Discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You don't have another one that doesn't cost us anything?
Next time.
Come back more. Item L is a project acceptance request for the Freeway Drive Improvements Project, and Frank Reiner's coming back to the podium. Welcome back, Frank.
Good evening, Mayor, city council. This one doesn't cost us anything because we've already paid for it.
Good job. Good job, Frank.
So this is actually a recommendation to close up a very old piece of business that we recognize that we never actually closed up. Just to introduce this, when I come before you to request your approval of the acceptance of a construction contract, that is a bookend to your decision to award a construction contract. So when you accept a construction contract, that initiates the closeout procedures that we go through with the State Department of Revenue, State LNI, and the Employment Services Department to just basically write finish to a contract. So in this particular case, I'm coming before you to recommend that city council accept the work completed by SRV Construction for the Freeway Drive Improvements Project, which was completed a while ago. You awarded that project to SRV Construction of Anna-Cordus, Washington on July 14 of 2021. The award was in the amount of just over $2 million. This project included adding sidewalks on the west side of the street, striping bike limbs for both sides of the street, new stormwater facilities and conveyance in the street associated primarily with the new curbing, enhancing the corridor street lighting, improving the intersection channelization, and rehabilitating the pavement surface through a grind and overlay. Federal transportation dollars from the Surface Transportation Block Grant were secured for this project. These were secured through the Skagit Council of Governments and were used for both design and construction. The total federal award was a little over $2100, or $22.1 million. That included both design funds and construction funds. Additional local funds, which were primarily used as match funds for that grant, came from the stormwater utility funds and from the Transportation Benefit District funds. The work has been completed, including all of the applicable federal requirements and specifications that were in effect at the time that the project was being done. So the final adjusted contract amount that was paid to SRV Construction was $1,983,345, and that was primarily due to the variability in materials quantities actually used for construction. So with that, do you have any questions for me?
I'm sure SRV will be relieved they don't have to go to the site every morning, as they have for last year. Thanks, Frank. Any questions for Frank on this project? Still get compliments on it. It was a good one.
It was, although I remember a lot of grouchy people. They were grumbling, but you know what? It's worth it now that we drive down that lovely road.
Yeah.
I'll move to accept the work completed by SRV Construction for the Freeway Drive Improvements Project.
Second.
Motion by Mary and a second by Yudis. Discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no? Motion passes.
Thank you very much for your time.
It's closed. We're done with that one. Thanks, Frank. That is the end of our new business for Item 7. I will ask our city attorney to please call the mayor and city council into executive session.
Thank you, Mayor, and invite the mayor and members of city council to an executive session on the grounds of discussion with legal counsel. City enforcement actions, litigation or potential litigation, which the city, the governing body, or a member acting in their official capacity is likely to become a party when public knowledge regarding such discussions is likely to result in either adverse legal or financial consequence to the city pursuant to RCW 4231-10 Subsection 1I. It'll be for 15 minutes. We would convene at 8:13 with no action after.
And with that, we will adjourn the City of Mount Vernon City Council meeting for Wednesday, May 14, 2025 at 7:59 PM.